Called to order, City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1323, November 5th, 2018. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Haller Roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Collins? Herbie?
Here.
Holt? Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to excuse Councilwomen Collins, Holt, and Ness.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we excuse Council ladies Ness, Holt, and Collins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is presentations. I'm sorry, minutes. Are there any questions or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Now we'll move to item number three, presentations. The first of these presentations will be 20th anniversary plaque for Police Lieutenant Tony Pope. I'm gonna ask the sergeant. Sergeant? Oh, I'm sorry, there you are. I didn't see you come in.
Yeah, I stuck in.
Okay. You're first.
Okay. Well, first of all, it is Chief Arms wishes he could be here. Unfortunately, he is away at mandatory training this week, and of course, he has been around quite a long time, and Lieutenant Tony Pope was one of those officers that Chief Arms kinda took under his wing when Tony came in, and so Chief Arms told me he's extremely proud of you and what you've done and what you've accomplished thus far in your career. On behalf of the Police Department, we congratulate you on 20 years of service, well done. I know your son AJ is here, his wife Tracy, and then AJ and it looks like Katie, I'm sorry, is Katie? Oh, right there, sorry. And just a little bit of background on Lieutenant Pope. He joined the department in 98 as a clerk, and then in 2001, well, between that and 2001, he came on as an auxiliary, and in 2001, we hired him as a police officer. So Lieutenant Pope is one of those guys that has risen through the ranks, literally, from coming on just as a clerk for us, as an auxiliary, and then as an officer. In 2011, he was promoted to sergeant, and then just recently to lieutenant. Now, Tony, everybody seems to carve out a niche for themselves, wherever they're at, and particularly in the Police Department is no different than that. Tony is one of those guys that has been gifted in administration and organization, and as such, we've tasked him with a lot of responsibilities. He carries a lot of weight at the PD, a lot of weight that others cannot do or hold. He's responsible for things such as firearms, all of our training. Lieutenant Pope trains folks not only in our Police Department, but also at Butler Tech, new recruit classes, officers that have been around and on the job for a couple of decades. He does all the training there as well. He's responsible for our fleet, our uniforms, he's in charge of our patrol division, which of course is our largest division in the Police Department, our armory, event planning, all of those different things, and that's somewhat unusual that we would have an officer in charge of so many different things, but it speaks to his ability to manage a lot of different things and do that well. And so, Tony, on those 20 years, congratulations again, job well done.
It is with pleasure and honor that I present this plaque. It reads, Forest Park City Council recognizes Tony Pope for 20 years of outstanding dedication and loyal service to the City of Forest Park, 1998 to 2018. Congratulations, Tony, and thank you for your service to us for all these years.
Thank you.
I know you had to talk.
I know. I just wanted to say thank you to my family, my wife Tracy, my mom, my kids. I know I've missed a lot of time being here, and I appreciate you guys' understanding. To the guys I work with, I appreciate you guys coming, and council for letting me do this for 20 years, thank you.
Comments from council? Councilwoman Herbie?
I have one question first. Is there someone of our explorers?
He's not, he's a Hamilton County Explorer.
He's a Hamilton County Explorer, well, congratulations to you. And congratulations for your 20 years, and when you're lieutenant, captain? When you're captain?
Don't be moaning.
It was talking about your organizational skills, as a person who is also organized, I really appreciate that, because we need those kinds of people that keep track of all those kinds of things, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
One more.
I just want to say, congratulations for 20 years of service to the City of Forest Park, thank you.
Mr. Burns?
You know, it's rare to find someone that has all those skills, and people still like you. There's no joke. Because oftentimes, you find yourself directing, guiding, telling, coaching, and I can tell you, Tony, all the time that I've been on council, your name always comes up, and it usually comes up and a smile comes after. So, that's a true testimony to the person that you really are, and the way people appreciate you for the service that you provide. So, thank you for being here. I'm not gonna be naive enough to say 20 more, but 10 might be nice. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Lieutenant, I want to thank you on behalf of the city for the service that you've given to the citizens in the City of Forest Park. Looking back to watching you over these years, you became a member of the Police Department just about the same time that I was first on council, so you and I've kinda meshed, not only in terms of time, but I know that on a personal note, for me, you're very, very good with firearms. You told me to get rid of one because it was dangerous and I had no business with it and I should have your assistance to buy it, so I did, I took your advice, obviously. But again, I want to thank you, and I want to thank your family. I know oftentimes, you probably wish he were there when he's here. There are times when I'm sure that he wanted to be there, but he was here, and you can't have one without the other. He could not do his job and do it nearly as well as he did if he did not have your support, so as well, on behalf of the city, I would like to thank you for supporting him so that he can serve us. So again, Tony, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Captain, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony? Here you are. The next item on the agenda would be a motion. Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to amend the agenda and take up at this time item C, under new business, a motion to appoint a candidate to board a commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we amend the agenda and to take up item C on the new business, to appoint a candidate to a board or commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Haller Roll under the motion to amend.
Burns?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
The motion to amend the agenda passes unanimously. So at this time, a motion would be in order to appoint Ms. Kathy Gray to Parks and Recreation.
I would move to appoint Ms. Kathy Gray to Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring on November 30th, 1921.
2021. 2021.
Twenty, sorry, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we appoint Ms. Kathy Gray to Parks and Recreation Commission for a term that would expire 11/30/21. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Ms. Gray, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, is Ms. Gray here?
I don't think she is here.
Okay, we will do this appointment on Twitter at another time. Okay, now we'll move to item number four, and before we do that, as usual, this is the time when those members of the audience who would like to leave can do so, don't feel bad, this happens all the time, sit down. He cannot wait to e-
I thought I had to stay there, I'm sorry. I would've stayed all night, sir.
I know, I know. Okay, item number four, communications from the public. This is time for citizens to come in on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped and recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council? Anyone? If so, please come up to the podium and sign in and tell us who you are, your name and address.
I want to thank you, my name is Gregory McKittrick, I'm in 11701 Hardin Court. I'm here on behalf of the cat situation around in that area. It is really bad, I've been there since 24 July, and I reported to the office downstairs about the cats, and I talked to Ray about it, he came to talk to the lady, and just been conversation back and forth, but I didn't learn until this week that she was only allowed to have only four cats. I've witnessed more than 20 cats at one time being fed. I got pictures right here where they's feeding, where it's 10 cats being fed at one time, and they're being fed every day and maintained. And at the worst part, a skunk comes there to eat also, and she came outside to give the skunk water, while the skunk was out there eating the food out of the cats' bowls. I'm asking that the city look into it and, you know, and try to get her to break it down to at least four cats. They're furrow cats, every place that I called said that I would have to fund the money of the removal of the cats, you know, and the cats was there when I got there, you know, and there's no organization nowhere in the city there to help me.
Are these cats on your property or hers, or?
They're on my property, and hers as well. They're all furrow cats. She doesn't house them inside the house, she feeds them outside, and they come around between her and another lady on Hinton. There's been reports filed on that address as well, that the city is aware of, that the cats are abundant, and matter of fact, y'all fire department chief showed me on his phone back in 2014 that it was just as many cats back then, and the cats are still there, and this is 2018. So, and I was just wondering, is something to be done?
So, you've talked with the people in the city, and you gave the people you talked to the address where the cats are, I mean, her address and her information?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We will follow up on that, where the city manager will talk with the community development director and property maintenance people, and we will see what we can do to help you in that situation.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you sign in there and make sure you leave your name and address on there?
Also, I had filed an affidavit, also signed affidavit that I submitted earlier. You want me to sign my name here?
Yeah, okay, and do you mind leaving those pictures with us?
Yes, sir, I printed these for you.
Okay.
That's my affidavit, copy my affidavit, yeah, you have a copy downstairs, right, that's my copy.
Okay, I'll give all this to the city manager. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Question for me? Okay, Mr. McKittrick, Mr. Hodges, our city manager would like to ask you a question.
Yeah, well, not so much of a question, but obviously, you know, this is a problem as it's pictured and everything, and I think what we should probably do is just arrange a time that we could get together and talk about this a little further to see what strategy we can apply to get this addressed. Problem we're gonna have to start with is the individual not claiming the cats, although they're being fed, and I think that starts to constitute some sense of ownership. But you probably have thought about this a little bit, and I just think we need to get together and talk about what strategy we need to apply to remove these cats. It may not be a matter of just citing her, we may have to have a different strategy.
I made the claim through Hamilton County Public Health as well, they sent an investigator out, she witnessed the cats being fed at that location, and according to their ordinance, and their code is if they feed the cats, they own the cats, you know, so she claims ownership to the cats by feeding them.
Right, and that will be part of it, but I know we'll automatically get into issues because as much as that was seen, we go to court, now we gotta have a witness, we gotta have that witness there. I don't know if they're ready to testify, but even in light of that, I'm just suggesting that we talk about it a little further and see if there's some strategy to do something in addition to maybe a citation. At some point, you gotta remove the cats, because, you know, even she says she's not gonna do anything else, you still got the issues of the cats. We gotta think in terms of how we can get rid of the cats, as well as get her to better comply with our guidelines.
Well, she went on vacation for the past two weeks, she'll be back in a few days, and I thought that was the best time for the cats to scatter, because it wouldn't have been nobody feeding them. And then we looked out the window, and she talked to neighbors and to the children and to coming in, and they go in her garage, and they feed the cats. I don't know if she paid them to do it or what, but they maintain and keeping the cats there in the location by them feeding the cats while she's gone. If they had have stopped feeding the cats, the cats would have scattered and went elsewhere to try to find food, and they would not have been so condensed all in one area. You know, if they can just scatter throughout Forest Park and not all be just congested right there, right next to my house, and they eat in her house, but they come and defecate over in my yard.
Okay, so again, if you just leave your name and address and a contact number, even what's the best time to get you, so that Mr. Hodges can follow up with you?
Anytime, I'm retired army.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move then to item number five, reports of standing committee. The first report will be public improvement and facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as our recreation, the annual harvest fest was combined with the fire department's open house. We had a great turnout despite the weather. There were games, food, crafts, face painting, and balloon making. We estimated over 500 attended this event. Also, our basketball signups ended October 26th, but we will continue taking applications until the end of November for kindergarten and first grade children. Also, our boys' wing soccer team finished third in the league, and they will continue on to postseason tournament. That completes my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none, Councilwoman Moore, I have on the work session for you, cleaning contract work session of the 12th. Do you have any additional items?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Would the clerk please make note that Councilwoman Collins came in at 8:21? Next item, item B is public safety committee. Councilwoman Ness, if anybody from her committee would like to report for her? Hearing no one. There is one item on the agenda for public safety for the 11th, it's multi-hazardous plan for the Hamilton County EMA. The next committee report is ways and means, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I have a number of things. One is the business recognition breakfast will be taking place on Tuesday of November 13th at Ameritas, and this is an opportunity for the city to recognize a number of our businesses that have made significant contributions to the city in the recent year. And then, as far as environmental is concerned, there are a number of programs which are ending and some which are beginning. The reforestation Forest Park program, 89 trees were distributed to residents for planting on their residential properties, and six trees were subsidized by the Environmental Awareness Committee for planting in Bruce Ferguson Park. The tree removal program we started last year as an experiment was successful, and we are again doing that this year, this coming year, and residents can check that out on the website, forestpark.org/environmental, and we will offer up to a 50% subsidy for removal of trees on your property. And we're also, along with that, doing some renovation and replacement of trees along Carolyn Park Boulevard. Also, the new solid waste contract started in October of this past, October 1st of this year, and there's a slight increase in some of the cost for that this year. There'll be a slight increase next year, and then a slight increase in the third year. The used tire drop-off was recently done, and 138 tires were recycled, and over the course of our large appliance program which ended, 71 appliances were recycled, and 34 of them containing Freon. So, I want to commend our environmental awareness program for all of those projects and programs. Yeah, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session, that's additional collection services providers. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Next committee report is community development, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report, I did attend the harvest festival, and it was very well done, and I would just echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Moore. Everybody had a great time, face painting, information gathering, information sharing, it was a wonderful event. And that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none, Mr. Burns, I have one item on the agenda for you, that's community development leans, do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next committee report is law committee, Councilwoman Collins?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the law committee at this time, however, I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none, Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you, do you have any to add?
Yes, I too attended the harvest festival, and my compliments to all involved in putting that together, and Councilwoman Moore, whenever you can get people to come out in the rain for fun, that is a feat, and that was so wonderfully, surprisingly wonderfully attended that you would have thought it was a sunny day, and everybody had a good time in spite of the weather, so thank you for that.
Okay, next report was human resources, Councilwoman Holt, she's absent, is there anyone to report anything for her? She has one item on the agenda, reappointment to boards and commissions. Next report is item F, internal governmental relations and communications, I have no report. There's one item on the agenda, when a recess, I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, item number six, the mayor's report, no report, but I would add to my thanks to the volunteers and the committees and commissions as well as the fire department for the work on the harvest fest, and I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, next item, item seven, city manager's report, Mr. Hodges?
Thank you. First, I'll report that the departmental reports have been completed, they were included in council packet and also placed on file with clerk of council for public inspection. We're right now gearing up for the winter season, it seems a little early when you step out your door right now, but within a short period of time, we will be dealing with the snowfall and things along that line, so we've kinda switched over our equipment, and we're, as I say, gearing up for the winter season, and we'll be well-prepared for that. That would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, item number eight of the reports, first of those being law director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did obtain an injury or forfeiture regarding some property on Reliance Drive that I've provided to the city manager, the property has now been transferred into the name of the city, and also finished up some work with Lieutenant James Ward on juvenile records and what would be publicly disclosed and what would be maintained as a private document. Other than that, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for the law director? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next report is clerk of council, Mrs. Hough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report this evening.
Any questions for clerk of council? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Stuckson. We'll move now to item number nine, new business, is there a motion? Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, ordinance number 26-2018. This ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, ordinance number 26-2018. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 5-0. Item A, ordinance number 26-2018, would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 26-2018, an ordinance approving a zone change for 2.64 acres located at 1140 Smalley Avenue, from PB planned business to R1, one-family residence, and amending the zoning map.
This is the first reading, this will be on the agenda for a vote at the next council Next item on the agenda is a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, resolution number 31-2018. This resolution was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, resolution number 31-2018. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is item B, resolution 31-2018, would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number 31-2018, a resolution accepting the bid of Elex Inc. for the Kemper at Hanover Traffic Signal Improvements Project.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, I move that we adopt resolution number 31-2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 31-2018. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, in this situation, three sealed competitive bids were received and opened, and for the lower bidder was Elex Incorporated in the amount of $118,496.50. With council's approval of the contract award, we plan to order materials this year and start the physical work in March of 2019, with the completion by 2019, and so I moved that- work in March of 2019 with the completion by 2019. And so I move that we adopt this resolution.
Any further discussions? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call a roll on Resolution 31-2019?
Herbie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Resolution 31-2019 passes 5-0. Is there any further business to come before the body? Is there any further business to come before the body?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm not sure if I can ask, just about ordinance 26-2018?
Okay.
I thought there would be a vote similar to the last one that's passed. Did I have something there?
Yeah, we have to have a first reading on it. We have to have a reading on it first at one meeting, then vote on it at the next. So tonight, we did a first reading. Doesn't mean that it didn't pass or did. It's just that by process, that's the way it works. So it will be on the ballot for actual council vote at the next council meeting, which will be in two weeks, two weeks from today. Okay?
So the last thing that we read, that was just a public hearing, was?
That was a public hearing. Right, right.
And it couldn't be read in the second place?
No, no, it has to be read in the act. John, do you want to explain anything else on that, or did I?
It's a zoning ordinance change. Two weeks ago when you were here, that was just the public hearing. There was no action taken. There couldn't be any action taken. Tonight is the first reading of the ordinance, and then on the second reading, council would vote on the ordinance. And that'll be two weeks from now.
Is there an opportunity to do two readings simultaneously?
No, not for this.
No, right.
Okay, we just got some different information from Mr. Anderson, so.
Sorry, sorry, but that's, it's procedural. It's a procedural issue.
So two weeks from today is the next one?
Right. Yeah. Any further business to come before the body? Hearing none. Would the clerk note that at 8:35, we adjourn the meeting? Okay.